Ready?
Got it.
All right. All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the June 2024 meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission. It does appear we have a quorum present, so we will call our meeting to order at 3:30 PM. First up, do we have any public comments today?
We did not get a request for any public comments at the meeting today.
Wonderful. Thank you, Amelia. If no public comments, then the minutes from the previous meeting had been distributed. Hope everybody had a chance to look over those. We will look for a motion to approve those minutes if there's not any.
So moved as written.
Second. Okay. We've got a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those minutes from the previous meeting are approved. Being June, it is time for us to elect a new slate of officers. It is time for a new chair and vice chair. So before we get started with that, I would say we have one member who has completed a term, Mary May White. She's no longer with us, and I just wanted to quickly say thank you, Mary May, for your time and efforts with the Historic Zoning Commission. Thank you for your care and time spent with us. So with that said, let's move on. Let's open it up for, if we're ready, for nominations. And we will go with chair first and then move on to the vice chair position. So do we have any nominations for the chair position moving forward?
I make a motion that we nominate Jeff Davis for chair.
Okay. We have a nomination. I don't think we need a second on that. I think we just need to put that to vote. So all in favor of Jeff Davis as chair for the 2025 session, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if we can have a roll call.
Oh, yes, Ashley, I'm sorry. We need a roll call vote on all of those things. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Ms. Belcher?
Here.
Chair Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
All right. Are there any opposed?
Oh, I thought she was calling.
If none, congratulations, Jeff. She asked for the vote. He'll be our incoming chair. Okay. Next up, do we have a nomination for vice chair position?
Well, I'll make a motion that we nominate Deborah Belcher for vice chair.
Okay. We have a nomination for Deborah. Ashley, could you call the roll? All in favor?
Do you accept the nomination?
I guess so.
Look, just want to be sure.
Fair enough.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Vice Chair Davis?
Aye.
Chair Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No. Congratulations, Deborah. Thank you.
You get a designated parking place in a long cold situation.
All right. Well, with that business out of the way, we're going to move the old business to the backside of the meeting here and move on to item number six of new business. And Amelia, if you don't mind, could you introduce our first applicant, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Jakes, members of the commission. The first item on the agenda that we will be hearing today is for 1019 East Main Street for Mr. Matt Warren. He is requesting review for new fencing installed at an existing single-family residence. This property is located in the northwest corner of East Main Street and Park Circle. The brick vernacular-style one-and-a-half-story, single-family house with wraparound porch was built in 1903. The property contains approximately .41 acres in its zone RS-15 and is HI Historic Zoning, as well as located in the CCO overlay district. Properties to the north and the south of the property are RS-10. Properties to the east and west are RS-15. The applicant has recently installed an eight-foot-tall privacy fence along the north side and the west side of lot lines of his property, requesting, and he is now requesting HCA approval for the fence. I have shown on the exhibit, if you could see in the top-left corner of his home at 1019, you can see those red lines. That's actually where the fence has been installed. A portion of the fence will be visible from Park Circle. The style is a wooden fence, which the applicant has installed, and it is included in the pictures that I'm going to show. There's one side of it. That's pretty much what you can see going from Park Avenue. And there are several fences in the area that are similar to this that have been approved by the Historic Zoning, and the Historic Guidelines just say that wooden fences are allowed to be inside in rear property lines. And then you have pictures of the home, the garage, and Mr. Ward is here to answer any questions that you all may have for him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ward. If you don't mind, could you, just for the record, state your name and address, and we will move on to discussion of the fence?
Matt Ward, 1019 East Main Street.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion amongst the commission about the fence before we have questions?
Well, for me, don't our regulations require us to approve the highest fences six feet?
Well, she's mistaken. The height is six feet.
Okay. Thank God.
Okay. And certainly, I guess we should mention that ideally, any fence that's visible from the public right-of-way should have gotten design approval prior to construction.
I tried to.
Gotcha.
I thought this such a relatively minor change, since it was only on the back corner of the garage, that it would be possible to get administrative approval, as I have gotten on some other things, such as the arbor at the front corner of my house and a couple of other things. But I called up here and, being directed to the correct person, well, you get an operator or something that says, "Punch whatever for a person," and I didn't get anybody. I got a recording and left my name and number. I waited a week, never got a call back. I called again and did the same thing and waited another week and still didn't get a call back. I called a third time and I asked for a different person, and I think it was about a week. I waited on that, but I finally got a call back. And by then, my fence people had already shown up, and I was anticipating that this would just get administrative approval, because it's very short fence and in a very inconspicuous spot, and it met all the requirements that you've approved for other fences.
Okay.
So I let them go ahead and build it, and then I got the infamous call, "You've put this fence up without approval."
Fair enough.
That's why I'm here.
All right. We appreciate that information. I guess then, at this time, we should just discuss design as far as the fence is concerned. It does, to me, look like you've met standards that we have previously approved, so we just have that little detail of how it got built before we got a chance.
And by the way, of course, the reason I built it there was merely to hide my yard equipment, which you could see in the picture that she showed earlier. Lawnmower, leaf vac, utility trailer, a few other things like that that I was just trying to hide from the public. And I have also since added arbor vitae, if my Latin teacher taught me correctly, along from the fence all the way down to, not to the street, but to the last of my pavement before it cuts in. It's still maybe eight feet off of the street where the last bush or tree is, and that, when they grow up, will continue to help hide, because you can see from the picture that it's not completely hidden yet, but...
Okay. Anyone on the commission have any questions for Mr. Ward?
I don't have a question, and I understand your situation. You didn't get a call back, but I'd like to say to everybody out there watching this is that you moved forward without approval, and this commission could have disagreed and maybe vote to tear it down.
I understand, and I...
And I know, but I'm just saying that I want people listening to it to say to this commission that, get approval, because I have heard of, when I used to live here in town, of a fence that was too tall that was indeed cut down.
Mm-hmm. Yes. I realized when I did that, that the worst that could happen would be that I'd have to tear it down, but I felt so confident that it would be approvable that I went ahead and let them build it when they showed up.
Okay.
Took the risk.
Any other questions for Mr. Ward? Any discussion? If not, do we have a motion from anyone to approve his design?
I move that we approve it. Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Ashley, do you mind calling the roll? All in favor?
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Ms. Belcher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Davis?
Aye.
Chair Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries. The fence design has been approved.
Thank you. Can I make one other comment or suggestion? When Robert, what was his last name that was...
Louis. Robert Lewis.
Yeah. When he was here, he did give me administrative approval on some of the things that I did. And when I asked about that, after I got the call, came in and met with the planning, is it Planning Commission people, and asked them about that, they said, "Well, we don't have the power to give administrative approval on fences. I'd like you all to reconsider that when one is as benign as the one I put up."
Fair point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Ward, we appreciate your continuing, keeping a very nice property on East Main Street.
Thank you. Been there 50 years.
Thank you, sir. All right. That concludes that piece. Amelia, do you mind introducing our next applicant, please?
I certainly will. The next item on the agenda is for 315 East Main Street. It's St. Paul's Episcopal Church. They're requesting review for new fencing and gates at an existing church. Property is located northeast corner of East Main Street, intersection of North Academy Street, North and South Academy Streets. The original chapel was moved to this location in 1925, and a new sanctuary was added to the chapel in 2002 in a neo-Gothic architectural style. Property contains approximately 1.4 acres and is zoned commercial highway, and the portion of it is RS-15 on the backside along West College Street. Is also in the Historic Zoning District, and it is also located in the CCO. Property to the north is zoned OGR, Office General Residential. The property to the south and west are zoned CBD, which is the Central Business District, and property to the east of the subject property is Junior's Food Land and is zoned CH. All surrounding properties are also in the CCO and the Historic District Overlay. The church currently has two pony wall corral fencing areas. If you can see from the diagram that I'm showing you, one is along East Main Street and one is along Academy Street. They are both visible from the right-of-way. Not real clearly, because there's a lot of vegetation, a lot of trees, lots of pretty landscaping, but you can still see it, and what they're going to do here will be very visible. The church is proposing to install three-foot industrial-strength aluminum decorative fencing on top of the existing pony walls. Kind of have a diagram of actually what it would kind of look like at this point. They will also remove and replace the gate with, they're wooden right now, and they want to put the same industrial-strength decorative gates to match the new fencing. When this along, when this fencing is placed on top of this pony wall along Main Street, it will be 10 feet overall height. The proposed gate will be 10 feet tall as well, so it'll just kind of, it'll all look even across the top. The second pony wall is on, is on Academy Street. It is four foot in height, and with the three-foot fencing on top, it would be seven foot tall, and there again, they will replace the wooden gate with a metal gate in the design. There are several aluminum fencings, such as what they're requesting. This is at their columbarium, and it kind of mimics what they're going to do with this particular fencing style. I've put several pictures in here of the area, they get, the area gets broken into quite regularly, and then the door gets broken off, and they climb over the top into the back, and so they've had to replace the wooden doors numerous times, and so that is why they're requesting to make these changes to this fencing area. And the applicant is here today in order to answer any questions that the commission may have about this fencing.
Great. Thank you, Amelia.
Chair Jakes, should I recuse on this?
That may be appropriate, since you're a member of this congregation. Thank you for that. The applicant, could you please state your name and address for the record, so we have that?
Sure. Business address, personal address?
Just personal.
Personal, sure. Heather Studenberg, and I live at 453 East Main Street.
Thank you, Ms. Studenberg. All right. Well, let's start with any discussion about this design and use amongst the commission. Do we have any discussion here about this?
I have one quick question. It's very simple. We're looking at this photo now, and I don't know if you can put it up on the screen or on the television, but this shows like a white aluminum fence. That's not going to be what we're putting in, correct? That's just meant to show us...
That is my graphic design skills. It will be black, just like the other.
That was my only question. I think it's terrific condition. Thank you.
And have the same flirty design at the top.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, yes.
It has the pants catcher if you try to climb over it.
Correct.
I've never heard the phrase pony wall. Is that something here locally?
It's me. I've never heard it either.
I've never heard pony wall.
Really? I've mostly heard of them when they're internal, like a little pony wall. I've had it in a...
I guess pony being short, the wall was short before, so maybe it's for the height of a pony, but I'd like to, again, go out to the public watching this. Normally, we can only allow six-foot-high fences, but I do believe that this is an extenuating circumstance, that you've got people breaking into it, whereas people's residences, they're there all the time and can help stop that. You all are only there the days you have services, and so I think it's necessary, evil, so to speak, to keep people out so they don't camp there overnight.
Correct. We're worried someone's going to get hurt or, right, or they've turned off our HVAC units before, and so there, we're also worried about physical harm to, you know, our facilities.
Understandable.
So the gates lockable?
The gates do lock, and currently, the ones that we have, the wooden ones, the really tall one locks from the inside, but the way our foundation is at a, it kind of goes up, they climb over the existing wall, because as you get closer to the front door, it's only like a three- or four-foot-high pony wall. They climb over, unlock it, let themselves in, or break it from the interior, and the industrial-strength metal, we feel, will be able to withstand.
But again, this is aluminum?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not...
There are none, I'll move for approval on this.
Okay. We've got a first. Do we have a second?
Second.
First and a second. Ashley, do you mind calling the roll?
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Ms. Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
All right. None opposed. Your motion is approved for both sections of fence as submitted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
All right. That concludes our new business. Now, we have a piece of old business that we need to discuss. First, prior to the applicant coming up, we need to have a discussion amongst us concerning garage doors. I would like to preface this discussion by saying that, you know, in the past, at meetings prior to this, I have, I have said I'm not a big fan of precedent. One of the reasons there's a body of individuals here is because every situation is different. Sometimes we're dealing with contributing structures, sometimes they're non-contributing, sometimes they're new construction. So a precedent is a tricky thing when we're dealing with these scenarios that aren't exactly equal, and so we're here to try to, between us, make the best decision possible for the situation that we're dealing with. But one thing that we have gotten tripped up on a few times is the use of garage doors. I would dare say a garage is not a standard feature in a lot of our historic dwellings, especially contributing structures. More of a carriage house would have been something that we see from most of these homes that are 100 years old or so, that are contributing, and the modern roll-up garage door is just not a standard feature in a lot of these historic homes. So when we try to apply a historic element to a really non-historic situation, it can cause some grief, and therefore, we've got some inconsistencies. Staff has done a little research for us here at our request, and it does appear that we have approved a variety of garage door types through the years. And in defense of the commission, these doors have been new houses, existing homes, contributing, non-contributing, and so the variety is sort of an application to the situations that we've been dealing with. But for the sake of the next applicant, I think we need to potentially talk about a precedent, because this is, this again, is a continuing issue that we come up with. So do we have any, any additional thoughts on this subject from, from the commission?
No, I agree with, with the chair on that. You said it well.
I do think it's important to know that wood garage doors, especially the double-wide garage doors, tend to fatigue, and what they call in the business, a smile occurs, and that's a real problem. Wood, that's why we had, in some instances, and thank you for doing, whoever did the research, thank you all very much. We have asked for wood-clad metal doors. We've had metal doors, apparently that were proven, that looked like wood. Some were wood-grained to make it look like wood, and some were just painted solid colors. I do, in my mind, think that we're in a historic district, and the design of a door, should it, even if it is submitted as a metal door, we should consider a older style that looks like an old wood door. That's my personal opinion, but I'm only one person.
The wood appearance. I agree.
And old and, and that kind of thing. We've received numerous illustrations, again, thank you for that, that we, it's possible. There are more, there are more, there are more opportunities to pick one of those than there were 20 years ago, for sure, and I think it's important to make it look like an older door, to fit in with an older structure, even if it's an addition next to, and then the applicant's coming up, next to an old house, it's a, it's a garage. It should look, I think, to fit it and be complimentary to the historic home.
I agree with you completely on that. I think the standards we, the terms of rhyme and rhythm are used in our standards, that even though we're dealing with something that possibly a new addition, it really needs to go along with or complement the historic district. So I would agree with you with the wood grain, even if it is metal, the panels, those sort of things, help keep that rhythm.
I think the one item we've always stuck to our guns on is, is that wood, new windows should be wood, and we have, I don't, I can't remember, obviously, I didn't remember that we had approved some metal garage doors, but I think we need to stick to our guns on that, but the garage doors, they need to be functional, and most of these designs, metal clad garage doors, make it appear that it's a pair of doors that are hinged, and they don't do that typically.
Mm-hmm. I know a lot of the old carriage houses around our district used to hinge open and roll back instead of the overhead like a modern garage door, so it's nice when that can be mimicked, but...
One thing also that we're charged with is making decisions that stabilize or increase the value of homes in the district, and I think in the next applicant's case, he took a, to be tactful, a home that maybe was not as, had such harmony and has invested a significant amount of money in this home, and, and I think he should have some leeway. It is an improvement that every neighbor on the street should thank him for what he did on East College.
Okay. Thank you for that. Well, if, do we have any other discussion on the matter? If not, maybe it now be the appropriate time to invite our applicant up to the podium, please. Mr. Chambers, if you don't mind? If you could, just for the record, state your name and address for us.
Brad Chambers, 444 East College.
All right. And as I recall, what we are revisiting is item number eight of your last application, and that was concerning the garage doors. That item was deferred, and you had applied and asked for the use of three-car garage with a single-bay garage door and a double-bay garage door, and that you were interested in using a metal door at that time, and those are the details that I recall. Amelia, do you think you have anything to add to that application detail?
There's a detail on the screen right now. It's what he was proposing, a stamped carriage house door.
Okay.
It is a steel door, but it does have features on it that appear in a carriage... It is a steel door, but it does have features on it that appear in a carriage house environment. He originally had said black, and talking with him, sometimes he says he might go with a more of a wood-colored look, but I'm not certain as to where he is, but he originally asked for black.
Okay. Mr. Chambers, is this an accurate description of where you're at right now with...
I mean, the wood's fine. Any metal door?
Okay.
And of course, we can't approve color.
Right, right.
That doesn't matter.
Okay.
Do we have a close-up of the door itself?
It's hard to read the one that's got the asterisk that says stamped carriage house. Is it panelled below those windows? It looks like it is, but honestly, I can't tell.
See if I can, hang on.
It barely shows up.
It looks like there's some definition.
Well, that doesn't make it look...
So the one with the asterisk is the style of the door itself?
I'm, I'm open to any metal doors. I just didn't want to do a wood door. Stamped is fine.
This Amar brand?
Yes, sir.
I am a...
This, I don't think this was the Amar. I know he had brought a black and white photo of an Amar that he said he would be willing to use, and I believe that was one of them that was used in another approval. Hold on, and let's get to that one.
Mr. Chambers, you okay with a faux wood appearance?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm, I'm a fan of that as well. I think that helps add to the, you know, it might not be wood, but from the street, it looks like it's made of wood.
A grained door.
Right.
Grain.
Yeah.
Of a metal door.
A faux wood appearance, I guess, is what I should say.
Also, there was another asterisk on the window type of the door. It was a long horizontal one-piece of glass. Is that what you're asking for?
I haven't really thought about the, I haven't ordered them yet, you know, so...
There's an asterisk there.
It's, it says raised panel, long insert, so two panels. Is that for the single door, and it would be there for four for the double? Do you know?
At this point, I really don't have windows in it.
I'm sorry?
I'd rather not. I don't think I would, I think I'd really cut the cost and not put the windows in.
So you don't want the windows now?
I don't think so.
Have you got windows in the garage itself, so you'd...
Have windows around the garage, yeah.
Yeah, so you get daylight that way. You don't need it in the garage.
Amelia, can we scroll to maybe what would be the closest example of what Mr. Chambers is, is talking about, kind of tie that down, what is, what it's going to look like? Pretty close, anyway.
My best guess?
Go back.
Hang on. My best guess is that one on the top.
Except it won't be arched. It's flat head?
It's flat.
So it's more like the one below?
Yeah.
Without the windows.
Without windows. And there should be another one.
There was one that had...
There was one about three up.
Yes, several back.
There was, there was one that was approved on College Street about a year back. That one.
Yeah.
And there's another one that's...
That one is actually the fir, the second one on the bottom. That was what they had, this is what they asked to be approved, and that one was the actual, what, this is what they were approved for, and then the one on the bottom is what's there.
The wood grain is not as obvious in this picture.
There is a picture somewhere in this collection that shows a more obvious grain. Can you find that one?
Which one?
There's another one of a grained metal door that's more obviously, that it's almost like it's separate wood pieces. Did I make it up? Did I dream it?
Well, there's one that's, is a faux door.
I think that's what we're looking for.
I believe that proposed picture that you have from 324 East College
Yeah.
has no windows. It's a raised panel with a wood grain. I would dare say that's the style that I'd be willing to...
Well, I think we can make a motion based on the design features, no windows, panel, and that kind of thing, and then he can go find whatever he can afford. But I would probably get administrative approval through Amelia.
Suit you, Brian.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, can you give me an idea of which one of these, it can be an all-metal door.
The proposed one you had for 324 East College, you showed it a couple times. I think it might be up from, well, not that one, right there.
Yeah.
That style of door, where you can see variation in the color so that it looks like it's not just a solid brown. It has some wood quality to it. It has a raised grain, and it has a panel design with no windows.
It does, it does not have any fake hinges. I'm just adding that. It's part of the motion, I don't think we need to say, provide fake hinges.
This is something that's agreeable. We'd entertain a motion to approve a double and a single size garage door.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve a double and a single panel aluminum or steel garage door that has a wood grain effect. And if you will find what you want to do, submit it to Amelia, and she will do administrative approval for you.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Ashley?
Got a call, roll.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I was headed there.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Ms. Belcher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Davis?
Aye.
Chair Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Any opposed? If not, motion carries, and you have approval, given that staff approves your final choice based on the guidelines that we have laid out for you, Mr. Chambers.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe that concludes our new and old business. Now, do we have any staff reports or other business?
Well, I do have an announcement. Mr. Chase Salas has decided that he is going to be retiring from the Planning Commission to spend more time with his young children and young family, and therefore, we will be getting a new representative from the Planning Commission on the HCC board. And I would like to thank Chase for all of his time and efforts that he has put in to come into these meetings. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all, thank you for everybody, their guidance and everything I've learned by being on this board. Really appreciate it and look forward to how I can apply this in my future. Thank you.
Thanks, Chase. Appreciate your time and commitment to the Historic Zoning Commission.
Absolutely.
And I will also... I'd like to thank Mr. Jakes and Mr. Davis for being chair and co-chair the last couple of years. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
And I just want to reiterate Chair Beal's, Jakes's comments about Mary Mae. We really do appreciate her having served on this board for the many years that she's served and, and put a lot in, effort into the historic zoning area. We really appreciate that, appreciate that as well.
I tried to look up and see how long she had been on the commission, but she was here whenever I was appointed, so...
She may not appreciate you saying that.
So we'll leave it at that. All right. Is there any other business or discussion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have first and second, and Vice Chair Davis has given me the gavel. I've never used, so I'm going to say we're adjourned.